I'll read the legal notice of public hearing, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, notice is given that there will be a public hearing on the proposed budget for 2020, 2021 to be held by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Section 1201.3 of the Town of Portland Charter at the following place and time, Wednesday, May 6, 2020, 7:00 PM. I am in the Senior Center at 7 Waverly Avenue, Portland, Connecticut, with Dave Kozminski and Kevin Armstrong. And the rest of the board will be joining us, most are here, not all, by public access through Zoom, and it's available at www-portlandct.org. The subject for tonight is general government, Board of Education budget, and all other special revenue funds. At this hearing, any resident or taxpayer may be heard concerning the proposed budgets. Copies of the proposed budget are available for inspection online on our website, which is portlandct.org. And this notice was dated the 2nd of April 2020 by myself, Susan S. Bransfield for Selectmen. This is our second public hearing. There had been a public hearing on March 17, 2020, on this proposed budget that came out of my office at the start of March 2020. And I have received several email communications, and they are very numerous. I will ask the Selectmen if they wish me to read synopses of all of the hearings, information that came in, or to read the names I have shared with the Selectmen. When these emails came in, all of them were shared and acknowledged in the office. So I'll just open it up for the Selectmen's advice at this point.
I think so, so with these, as long as they're entered into the record, I know that I've had an opportunity to read them all.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
No, I said, I know that, I'm assuming that they're all going to be entered into the record regardless, but I have had an opportunity to read them all, I know personally.
So what would you suggest? Michelle Sepaglia, let me just let you know first that she has taken most. Some I received late this afternoon, and they were not entered in the synopsis. But Michelle has prepared for our recording secretary a synopsis of all of the emails that have been given to her. We did not want to include everyone's email into the public record, so we've included their name and their address if it was given. And I can certainly read all of the names and a gist of whether there was a one or two major comments, but it would take me quite a while to read all of these, but I certainly am willing to do so. But this public hearing is for the Board of Selectmen, and since you have read all of them in your email accounts, your portlandct.org email accounts, it might be repetitive for you. Lou, did you have any thoughts?
I think a synopsis, I think it's great to read those names, and a synopsis, I think is appropriate to, for the record tonight. I don't think you need to read through all of the letters, you know, word by word. And I would support just the synopsis. I've read all of those letters as well, I'm sure that all the other Selectmen have done as well. So I think if you just read the names and the synopsis, it'll give us an idea of where people stand.
Okay. Jim, did you want to comment again?
No, that's, I agree, I agree with that. I know that, to make it easier, I put them onto a Word document, it was easier for me to print them, and it was 11 pages. So I think for the hearing, it would take quite a long time. But I think out of respect for anyone who submitted a synopsis and their names would be, I think, good on the record.
Ralph?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if you just give a name and address, and, you know, most of them were, obviously what we've read, most of them would say they're in favor of keeping the budget for the Board of Ed in the place it was in your budget. So if you just give a summary of saying that's what they, they supported it, they were against it, whatever, I think that should be sufficient.
Rick?
Yes, I agree with the other Selectmen, I've read all the emails, and in some cases, I've received personal emails that I answered this afternoon. I also printed out the comments that Michelle, you know, sent us, you know, that 11-page document. So, so I'm good if you summarize, if you just want to summarize.
Okay, thank you. And we will, after I finish reading, we will have people who may wish to speak, and if they do, Kevin, if you could just indicate how they would do that, please?
Yep, so anyone who does want to speak during the public hearing, I'm communicating to you all via the chat feature in Zoom. And you just have to, like you would at a normal public hearing, state your name and address. And if you do have a microphone, we will go ahead and open that up for you, so you can actually address the board yourself. If you do not have a microphone, you may type what you would like to say, and I will read it for you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, and if there are any names that I have missed, I will be sure to give them to Michelle to include in the record, because there may be some that had not come in, or perhaps were inadvertently omitted. First is Alyssa Hennessy, and she is in favor of the budget, although I understand a tax increase during unprecedented times that we're in is unwelcome. Teachers have never stopped teaching, students have continued learning. We as taxpayers need to support that teaching and learning in whatever ways we can. She hopes that the Board will adopt a budget that doesn't include further cuts to education. She lives at 61 Mashama Sick Trail. Warren Christensen, a member of the Board of Education, and I believe she lives on Prospect Street, also sent in a communication later this afternoon in favor of the budget, as did Amanda R.C., who lives on, let's see, Waverly Avenue, and she's in favor, and Danielle Mooney as well. I don't readily have an address for Ms. Mooney, as it came in a little bit later this afternoon. Elizabeth Habino is in support of the Board of Education budget with the 2.8% increase, and is requesting no further cuts at this time. Ms. Habino lives at 19 Scenic Drive. Jen Arnold at 52 Gospel Lane writes in support of the Board of Education proposed budget increase of 2.8% and goes into nice detail as to her reasons, which I encourage you to read. Ms. Colleen Breed, teacher on Pepperidge Road, she lives in Portland as a lifelong resident, is seeking support and wants to substantiate the needs of the Board of Education on behalf of students and schools, appreciates work that we're doing during these pandemic times, and feels that fully funding the proposed budgetary resources for our students would allow us to provide high-quality education to the students, as Portland has been known to do. Baldemar Burzinski of 13 Pier Orchard Road writes, "Stop the increase in mill rate and taxes, sharpen the pencils, and make it go away. Taxes in this town are out of control." Kitch Surnicki of 435 Main Street asked, "Is Portland in line to get any funding from the bond commission? I wonder if those allocations will be decreased." She has a few other questions in terms of, "Do we think that July taxes will be collected at the normal rate?" She thinks the Board of Selectmen might want to look at freezing both Town and Board of Education budgets for the six months of the new cycle and reevaluate as we return to what she believes may be a new normal. Is there a mechanism in place to do that? And since we are in a state of emergency, can new union contracts be on hold for a period of time? Do you think the governor is going to allow municipalities some leeway? Do you think the exploration park will open by July 1? So potential money from there will be significantly decreased. Ms. Surnicki knows this is a difficult time to make decisions, but it may also be a time to make difficult decisions. And she thinks people will understand, and questions if any portion of supplemental may be held in rainy day fund based on pandemic, excuse me, circumstances. Natasha Distin, a teacher, I do not have a, an address for her. She is in full support of public education, doesn't want to see any further cuts to the education budget. And three years ago, in fifth grade, we were cut from six sections to five to save money. And research shows that children perform better in smaller classes. She's in full support of Susan Bransfield's 2.8% budget increase, and would hate to see any further cuts at any grade level or for class sizes at any of our schools. Recognizes this is a challenging job in these unprecedented times, and knows we have a thankless job, and wants to tell everyone how appreciative she is to the Board for all that you do. Alwyn Guild of 332 Middle Hattam Road, in terms of the Board of Education budget consideration, he comments that the combined utilities and maintenance costs total about $2.2 million. There are five school buildings reflected in the total. Assuming total expenses are distributed proportionately, each school building represents about $440,000 in expenses. What if the Gildersleeve School was sold to an elder care company? The impact could potentially be sales revenue to the town equal to $3 million. School building becomes a taxpayer at, say, $120,000 per year. The budget is reduced for $440,000 per year. A private company would hire local staff, strengthen the local economy, elder care visitors, do business with Portland businesses, thereby stabilizing the tax rate. School grounds provide ample opportunity for expansion of the business and employment and tax revenue. Brownstone School expands enrollment to accept Gildersleeve students. He further comments that it's projected that school enrollment will continually decline in the coming decade, and if so, suggests that Brownstone School be converted into a new town hall that would have town offices housed together and have a spacious and historic auditorium for town meetings. Visitors will easily locate the town hall, given that it's on the main street, and given the above proposition, the present town hall could be sold for condominium housing, given structural and mechanical amenities and spacious grounds. Like the sale of Gildersleeve School, the sale would provide very significant revenue and increase the grand list. And there are some other comments as well, and those have been shared with the Selectmen. In summary, this is a time for the town's decision-makers that must take a realistic look at the big picture and be prudent. Mia Hulk, 61 Bartlett Street, hopes the email finds you healthy and well, as can be expected, and is appreciative of the COVID pandemic information being shared. She writes today, as she has in the past, to express support for the budget that our Board of Education has submitted for consideration. She realizes the reality we are currently facing is drastically different than when the reality was when the budget was submitted. She also realizes how important it is to fund schools, and during the pandemic, has seen this firsthand. Thank you for your time, sending best wishes during this unprecedented situation. Renee Highland, 181 Paley Farms Road, "I support the 2.8% education budget, please don't cut it any further, and thanks for being so fiscally responsible by balancing what we parents want for our kids." Cindy Laverty, teacher, a proud lifelong multi-generation resident of Portland, currently having a daughter in seventh and a daughter in 10th grades. The cherry on top is that she teaches health education at Portland High School, loves her town, her job, loves her family, and deeply concerned about an impact that additional cuts could have to the education budget. Please be mindful of the big picture and what this means for children. Thank you for your time. Karen Lutkus, taking a moment to discuss the upcoming budget decision. She has been teaching family and consumer sciences in Portland for 16 years, and is the co-president of CEA Portland and a proud graduate of Portland High School. Her parents lived in town for 51 years as well. She writes in support of the Board of Education budget as presented with the 2.8% increase. She's observed a great need for social and emotional support of our middle schoolers, and fears that with many facing troubles during this distance learning time, the need will increase, and we may need more counseling support than ever before. Thanks you all for your time and dedication. Cindy Mazada of 67 Stephen Tom Road was writing today to let you know that she strongly disagrees with the 0% education budget for the 2020-21 school year, which I will just add as an aside, has not been proposed. And I did indicate to her that I do not support a 0% education budget increase. But at any rate, as an educator, she's blessed to see many accolades that are given for teachers during this season. No one ever could have planned for what we're experiencing, and she doesn't know what the future will look like on May 20, or what it will look like in the future in the fall of 2020. Please consider passing the budget as it is now with the noted 2.8% increase, is the bottom line. Colleen McLean, 99 Bartlett Street, she writes in support of the 2.8% increase to the Portland Board of Education budget, and explaining that many may need extra remediation. Suzanne McDougall of 22 Prospect Street requests, "Any increase to the Board of Education budget be kept as low as possible, but not reduce it in such a way that the Board of Education needs further cuts. We are in unprecedented times, and the pandemic has turned our everyday world upside down. But we must do one thing, and that is preserve our schools. As you know, I write to you not only as a Portland resident and taxpayer, but also as an educator in our school system, and has had the pleasure to work more than 27 years in Portland. There have been many changes, and she's most proud of improvements witnessed for the many years Portland has been gaining ground in the quality of our education. In summary, support education funding in our town." William Mierman, 30 Carlson Drive, "As an educator and supporter of Portland's public schools, I ask you to make the right budget choice by passing the proposed education budget as is. As we meet the challenges of this crisis, consider our needs going forward. Educators will continue to do what's best for our children, and we encourage you to do the same. Thank you." Kate Martel, 235 Paley Farms Road, "I would like the Board to vote for an increase, excuse me, of at least 2.8%, so that schools can hopefully maintain staffing of the current level, academic standards, athletics, and activities for all of our Portland public schools. Thank you." Robert Morse, 21 Plum Rose Court, "I'm sure you are keeping busy with the COVID-19 crisis piled on top of the normal budget crunch. I won't take much of your time, but wanted to provide a general comment on the proposed budget. First, thanks for reducing the Board of Education proposed budget from a 4.5% to a 2.8% increase. Certainly the right direction, but maybe there is additional opportunity to reduce the personnel costs. I urge you to put this high on your agenda of objectives for the coming year. While these are my personal thoughts, I do represent Bartlett Hill when I say that tax increases are a real burden on most of us. The increases of Social Security and private pension plans in the 1.5% neighborhood do not keep up with the increases in property taxes. Most of the Bartlett Hill residents are on some sort of fixed income retirement and are looking for your continued help in keeping the Portland taxes under control." There are other comments as well, and I encourage the Selectmen to read all of these. Eileen Moynihan of 51 Indian Hill Avenue, "Hopes the email finds you healthy and surviving this difficult time. She lives on Indian Hill Avenue with her husband and four children, and is fortunate to be a fifth-grade teacher at Brownstone Intermediate School. She works with an amazing principal and many incredibly dedicated educators. She wants us to know that she is in full support of public education and does not want to see any further cuts. The benefits of education, of course, are numerous. She's in full support of Susan Bransfield's 2.8% budget increase, and would hate to see cuts in grade and class sizes. You have a thankless job, and I want you to know how much I appreciate all that you do. Please don't cut proposed education budget." James Nessie, 41 Carousel Drive, "Just wanted to drop you a note on the town budget. I know things are crazy these days with the virus situation. Without the River East, it's hard to keep up with what is going on in town. My take is with people out of work and economy suffering, Portland should have a zero tax increase this fiscal year. Many people may not be able to pay their taxes until they go back to work. A town vote on the budget may not be possible because of the virus. Therefore, a zero tax increase would make the most sense. Thank you for listening." Jill Palmer, 51 Rockwood Drive, "I'm writing as an employee and resident of the Town of Portland. Please don't make budget cuts to education. I have two children in the schools and would hate to see them affected by budget cuts." Christopher Pickett, 22 Fox Run Road, "As you go forward, I wanted to take a moment of your time, remind you of the importance of passing our Board of Education budget at 2.8%. During the past six weeks, I've been impressed by the professionalism and compassion displayed by the staff of our Portland schools. As a teacher and a parent, I recognize how challenging the process has been. Without steadfast supportive educators, things would not be as good as they are. For that reason, he heartily supports the budget remaining at the 2.8%." Joseph Santa Vener, teacher, "Hopes this email finds you well and healthy. I write today in full support of maintaining Susan Bransfield's 2.8% budget increase for public education. He has coached a variety of sports, including Portland High School golf and soccer programs, and also has taught at Brownstone Intermediate School for 10 years. She's, he's been fortunate enough to coach many years. Our boys' golf team and girls' soccer team have seen outstanding achievements over recent years, and we've been fortunate in not seeing any cuts to our athletics thus far. I have seen negative impact that budget cuts can have on surrounding towns, and my hope is that we can continue to provide our students with the best possible educational experience, both on and off the field. Please do not cut the proposed education budget." Emily Sullivan, teacher, "I'm a French teacher at Portland High School. Writing in regard to the proposed budget, please fight for an increase of 2.8% or more. If anything less could be devastating to our schools and education. Thank you." Anne Marie Sarekko, teacher, "Please allow me to encourage you and the Board of Selectmen to vote for the 2.8% increase for Portland Public Schools. As a veteran art teacher in our town, I can tell you that supporting the schools in general and the visual art program in particular is more important than ever. As we continue through these unprecedented times, I want to remind you and all the Selectmen of the following things that visual art education provides. One, supports learning in our visual and media age. Two, reinforcement of social and emotional learning, which is so important right now. Three, develop future work skills, workforce skills. Four, standard-based curriculum and assessment. Five, builds cultural competency through arts learning. And six, creates creativity and innovation." Caitlin Tenney of 40 Stewart Hill Road, "We are in support of the 2.8% increase to the budget and cannot have any further cuts to the Board of Education budget this year." Elizabeth Trojanowski, 77 O Marlboro Turnpike, "I'm writing to you on behalf of my children and the teachers of Portland. Please know I'm in full support of the budget of the Board of Education, and do not support any cuts. Our school system is one of the most valuable tools we have to help parents to raise productive, creative, and involved members of our society. Thank you for your attention." Jen Visacicchio, this is, I believe that's how you pronounce her name. She is a teacher, third grade, in Gildersleeve School. It's her 10th year teaching in Portland. My experience teaching in Portland community has been extremely positive, and she wants to reach out to address concerns about the budget. As an educator and supporter of Portland schools, I ask you to please make the right budget choice by passing the proposed education budget as is. Please understand our students and schools need your support more than ever. As we meet challenges of this crisis, consider the needs going forward. Educators will continue to do what's best for the children of our town, and we encourage you to do the same. Thank you very much for your time and consideration." And the last one that I have is Jennifer Witche, 21 Cody Lane. "Please include this letter for the public hearing scheduled for May 6. She has a firm belief in our responsibility to do what's right for our school system, and these days of COVID-19 are upon us like none we've ever seen. We must look to the brighter days of our future for the hope to get us through. I do not envy the situation you may have been placed in by having to pass a budget without a voter referendum. It is my hope that you hear the message, the messages that you receive and the countless conversations you've had since last year's budget cycle and the first failed referendum. I hope you see with pride the community involvement that has blossomed as a result of that, and understand the support that you have in order to put together a fair and responsible budget. I implore you to choose to fund the Board of Education's 2.8% request and send a strong message to the people of Portland that you will help carry this town forward through uncertain times." Kevin?
Megan O'Brien, 42 Indian Hill Ave., and I apologize if this was already read. She states, "My letter may have come in late. I want to be sure that it is understood that I support the 2.8% increase. The BOE budget cannot take another hit such as last year. We keep the BOE budget in its place as is, our children deserve it." Corinne Scravano, 8 Hilltop Drive, let me find you in the list, she would like to speak. Corinne, can we hear you?
Yes, hi, thank you. I just would like to speak in support of the 2.8% increase in the Board of Education budget. Smaller class sizes enhance academic achievement, and the gains from those smaller classes in the early grades and throughout the schools continue for students as they progress into the upper grades. So I think it's very important that we follow the recommended 2.8% increase.
Thank you, Corinne.
Scott Leslie, 8 Michael Drive, let me find you in the list. Can we hear you, Scott?
I think so.
Yep, go ahead.
Everybody, first of all, thank you all for your service. It's particularly appreciated during this very difficult time for all of us. I urge you not to make any additional cuts to the education budget. When the state opens up, it'll be critical for all of us to return to work, for many Portland residents that require all of our students to return to school. We are all anticipating that there will be significant social distancing requirements in place when we do return to school in the fall. It's going to be critical that our schools have the staff and resources necessary to manage whatever the new normal for schools will be. It's also critical that we have an education budget that provides our schools with the flexibility they will need to continue to educate our students, but probably more importantly, to address any of the social distancing and the new requirements that are going to be necessary in place. I'm afraid that any cuts to the budget would hinder our ability to make sure that schools are ready to be open in the fall, and that all of our folks in town are going to be able to get back to work. So I urge you not to make any further cuts to the budget. I support everything you're doing, and once again, thank you all for all of your work.
Thank you, Scott. Next up, we have Dave Murphy, 40 Carousel Drive, let me find you in the list here.
You hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hey, thanks for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking as a resident, although I'm on the Board of Education. I do support the budget as presented, and you know, the common theme that I've been hearing tonight is pretty much the same, but I'm also hearing some people talking about, you know, wanting to keep the increase down to a minimum. So I think some of the discussion I'd like to hear from the selectmen, maybe at tonight's meeting, will be the revenue side. First of all, I know we've had some discussions with a group that I've been with about the rainy day fund being close to $6 million and that being almost 19%. I mean, could we, you know, and this is obviously an emergency situation, could we still keep our bond rating but take $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 and still keep us up at that 16%, 17%? Number one. Number two, you know, I know we don't have any guarantee, but I assume we're probably going to get some funds from the federal government, either at the school level or the town level, from some of the expenses we've had, you know, during this COVID crisis. And lastly, one of the things that was a little bit unsure, because maybe I didn't hear it in the last discussions about the revenue piece, about the shortfall. I know there was a couple elements that they're estimating about $600,000, but I'd like to understand, because last year we had a $600,000 surplus. And I'm not talking about where we spent that money, but I'm saying, if everything was equal, why wouldn't we think this year we would have a $600,000 or something similar surplus? Then we take out those revenues that we don't think we're going to get because of COVID, and that would mean we have more like a $1.2 million deficit from last year. You're following my math. So those are just some of the topics that, you know, I'd be interested in hearing a little bit more if they're part of the discussions when you guys go to figure out, you know, what the budget should be. That's it.
Thank you, Dave.
Oh, am I on? Okay, Tim Lavoy, I'm a Board of Ed member and a community member, and I want to kind of say some things in support of what Dave Murphy just said. And, you know, the 2.8% increase in the BOE budget, I think, is absolutely necessary if we're going to continue the services and the education for our kids that we need, and especially as we rebound from this crisis. I think that, as Dave said as well, the mill rate, well, he didn't mention the mill rate, but the mill rate, I think, the budget as is, is like 1.2 mills increase. I think that, you know, a lot of people see that number and they, you know, they kind of, they cringe at that, and as a taxpayer, you know, who wouldn't? But as Dave said as well, the mill rate can be reduced by use of the rainy day fund. If there was ever a rainy day, I think we're looking at it right now. I think our last normal day was Friday the 13th back a couple of months ago. And we really need to, you know, push ahead and understand that that rainy day fund is really, well, it is all taxpayer money. It's money we paid in taxes in excess of what was used. And if there was a time to put some of that to use, this would be it, and I think it could be done effectively and still be done to maintain our to maintain our bond rating and keep us in good stead with our creditors. Thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
I don't have any additional public comment at this time. If you didn't get my message from earlier, please put your name and address in the chat if you would like to speak. I think we're good.
Okay. I want to thank everyone who took the time to put in such well-thought-out comments, not only tonight, but also in written form, and I appreciate it very much, as do Board of Selectmen. And I speak on behalf of the entire town when I thank you for your concern in running our town. It is very important, and it's certainly reflected in the number of comments that we have. And I understand from Dave Kozminski, we have nearly 70 people on the call as well. So it's really encouraging to know that so many people are being part of this decision, and that really warms our hearts to know that we're in this together and are committed toward improving our town. So with that, I'll call the public hearing closed, and it is 7:35 PM.